English is fine. English is okay. Alright, I think we're good.
I don't know if we'll have anybody else, so I'm gonna wait just a couple.
We could get to turn on the recording sometimes. You got a new version of it?
Yes, I have everything. But they still won't finish because I can't technically submit that application. Now, as well, I can do the commercial truck, like new trailers. I know there's quite a few, um, visitors. I can do admissions stickers. You have to have it for Cumberland County. That's the only county of men that requires. We're going all in hands that we have around here.
Okay, and so, sir, almost, um, we'll call them in order. Um, two items on the agenda tonight, two regular items. The first is the hatch application. Uh, for an auto repair and inspection station. And the second is the public hearing. For the cottage that we just did, the site isn't on, on the dis cottage on Torsey. So we'll begin, um, with the, with the hatch application. Who's Zachary?
I am. Hi.
So, um, our process is, is usually that the applicants will give us just a general summary of what it is your. We have your application on this Reddit, but we'd like to hear from you about. What you're planning to do and, and just briefly, what, what's the interpretation? What you think is important about it, if you want to highlight anything in particular. And, uh, I would have some questions.
I'm not very good at speaking, but anyways, so I'm trying to open up an automotive fair shop in an existing garage. I have had my state inspection license since I was eighteen years old. I can do commercial trucks, I can do trailers. Regular vehicles, motorcycles, everything but school buses. I didn't take the school bus because I don't want the liability of a school bus. Um, so just looking to open a shop in town that can service everybody's needs. I can do tires, I can do. Basically, anything anybody needs done. I don't plan on building a new garage because I already have a sufficient sized garage there.
And I, I expect planning board members, uh, had a chance to look at the application. I think initially we had been missing some pieces, but I think it's. On the list of providers that was required and so forth, so. Um, so I don't know if the questions from the planning board and what we will do tonight is. Uh, usually for many of the applications that we look at, we have a two-step process. And firstly, tonight's meeting, we would just be looking at the application and. Uh, determining if it was there, if all the, you know, the required information has been submitted. Um, it's a chance for planning board members to ask any questions they might have. And if everything is in order, we find it complete, then, uh, the next step in the process is to send you a public hearing. And, um, um, often, uh, there are not members of the public that come in to make comments, but, uh, it is part of the process. We always, uh, offer that public hearing and we notify the advisors. And there is a notice, uh, in the, in the KJ, uh, so the people know that the application's pending. And if they have comments, uh, they would be able to. So complete this tonight and then we'll talk about the other. Um, I did have one question, um, about, um, vehicles on, on site.
Yeah.
And, um. How many there might be at any time and where they're going to be stored and anything about the, you know, the, the storage of vehicles.
So I've always tried to keep my property fairly neat anyways, even though I've always had vehicles there, but as far as number of vehicles probably. What's that?
Speaker.
Sorry. So as far as number of vehicles, probably between five to ten would be my guess. No more, I can't imagine having any more than ten there because I don't want, I don't want. I can't work on very many, I can only work with one at a time anyways. I don't want a whole slew of them sitting there. I can only work on so many at a given time.
So, so you don't intend to, to sell vehicles, it's strictly repairs?
Strictly repairs at this point in time, yes.
I thought I saw him here that he was gonna do sales.
That, that's just, that's the title, the, the description that you had to pick from. There's used car sales, auto body repair or something like that. Not at this present time, no.
So where would the, the five or ten vehicles be parked? Would they be behind?
There'll be, the ones that are ready to go will probably be parked on the back line, well, the sideline over by. So if you're pulling in my driveway, it'd be towards the left of the driveway, away from the house. But up by the garage, from telephone pole forward, I guess, would be. And then I had parking out behind the housing garage.
Usually you have some cars out front that we sell.
Yeah, my personal vehicles that I gave up on. I, I still have a few that I'd like to get rid of, but. I mean, if I have to down the road, get a used car license, I'm not opposed to doing that.
I didn't look at it totally, but are you gonna have any lighting, light kind of lighting or anything?
I may, I may down the road put a, something for a banner or a sign on the garage and have a backlit sign, but no extra lighting, lighting up the yard, no.
So, what we see now is what you.
No, I'm not, I'm not planning on changing anything. I'm just trying to get legalized so I can actually do it. And actually be able to advertise that I'm working there and be able to do state inspections and.
Now, when you have, when you do state inspection, isn't there a sign that you put outside?
Yeah, there's a little yellow sign. It's about this wide, right? It's probably twelve by eighteen or sixteen by eighteen. It goes on the front of the building.
Do you already have one?
No, I don't have one. I have, you don't get that until you actually get licensed by the state police. And I can't even apply for this inspection station to be done until I get approval from the town.
So then that sign will be on the, on the garage where you work?
Yeah, the face of the building. So you, you go to see it from the road, but it's not. Unless you actually know what you're looking for for a sign, it's not highly visible. It's just a yellow sign. Pretty much, yeah. So this, the yellow signs that you see that say watch out for falling snow, it's about the same size as those.
And then you'll have a sign on the building itself for the name of the business?
At some point, yes.
But not now.
Not now, no. I don't have the money to put up a sign.
Other than that, you really don't change anything.
No, I don't, I don't change anything. The driveway is sufficient enough. I don't need to have gravel or anything holding for a driveway, though. Yeah, it's plenty big enough and I have ample storage to pack the stuff that isn't as nice looking up by now, so it's not an eyesore of the road. And I, and I put up cameras recently too, so I have some security on premises.
And behind your house, you store cars there or you have some storage?
Yeah, I have some room for storage behind the house.
Those for sale or?
No, those are either for parts or for stuff I'm taking parts off of for projects and then. When I end up with junk metal from much one jobs, I stop and follow, I use that. So instead of the metal being sitting on the ground, I put it in those vehicles and then when the vehicles fall, I haul it to the box to get rid of it for the scrap metal.
Is there something in here? I was looking, she was looking back at permanent. Or a building of some sort of, like a leaning tube?
Yes, there is one of them. It was, yes.
Is that two thousand nineteen or what?
I'm terrible with names.
It is in the packet.
So is that building there?
Yes.
Is that where the, is that out back where the co- where the cars?
It's on the, it's actually on the side of the garage. You can see the, you can see the lean tubes from the roadbed. Welcome.
Um, so in, in terms of, um. You know, vehicles that you might be using for cars and scrap metal that you mentioned, um. Um, would you only, um, have, like, one of those going at any one time?
Usually only one going at any time, because I don't like, I don't like looking at junk either, so.
And I guess I, you know, I would ask if you would be okay with, um. You know, in a permit with some limitation, I guess, on the numbers of vehicles.
Yeah, I'm willing to work with and figure out, uh, reason, so.
Uh, it, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't know the business, obviously, but. And I don't think we're gonna save, you know, all of a sudden. You know, fifteen junk vehicles out back stuff or, you know, old, old cars, but it's not.
I'm not interested in selling junk gas by no means, so.
Yeah, and, and I mean, obviously that comes with its own package. Other questions?
Uh, nothing else. Go to some of these questions are essential to what's gonna happen, but. What's your, um, how many years have you worked in the field?
How many years have I worked in the field? Thirty.
Very, uh, are you currently working for another company?
I am helping a friend out in Mount Vernon. In the meantime, trying to keep him caught up, but. Right now, I'm not really, I'm helping a few friends get their stuff caught up while I'm in the mix of trying to get my permits done and helping him out in Mount Vernon, so. Right now, technically, no, I'm not really working anywhere. I helped him on a couple days and. But until, I wa- I was working right up until July.
You bought the property in two thousand sixteen, I think, because then.
It was, that sounds, no, I would say before sixteen and then.
Looks like Mr. Morse was permitted back in two thousand twelve.
I bought it right after he was permitted, is why it never actually went through.
I see.
So he got all the permits to be at an inspection station and then never followed up with it, because I bought, I think I bought it from him the very next year.
Is this a long-term plan of yours to do this?
It was always a backup plan, yes. And then in July. I dissolved my partnership with my father and went on my own, so. I'm looking right at the date, but I don't see a date on it.
Okay.
Okay, I purchased the property in sixteen, so it would have been fourteen, because I rented the property off him for two years before I bought it.
Do you have any employees?
No. As business grows, I probably will have to, but starting out, definitely not gonna need any.
Um, you had provided a, a sketch for us with the building, some of the driveway and stuff. Um, uh, not, not right now, but for, uh, the next meeting, which, um, would be willing to. Anything on that sketch where you expect you would store the impulse and, and. I know generally where you're, you're speaking, but if you could include that on the sketch, it would be helpful.
I can do that. So it's pretty much where you can't see nothing anymore, so. Other than the vehicles that are down and ready to leave.
Other questions?
We had the section of the ordinance on parking areas.
Wasn't striking intuitively as the parking area does.
It's quite, it's a little weighted. The corner of it's twenty, twenty-five feet. It's ju- the very tip of the corner is just over the limit. The rest of it. So his corner and my corner with that. Lean to stats and then everything goes right away from the cor- property, so his property is a funny shape.
We need to end of that section there. It looks like they're talking about, you know.
Yeah, so if you look at the, like, if you was looking at the existing garage and the sketch that's there. And then you see the two box sheds, that's all pa- that's all packing for disabled vehicle or whatever. That's something that don't look slightly can be packed away and then you can't see it from anywhere. Unless you actually like stand in my property binoculars and really try to look you in and see.
Other questions? Anybody?
Page sixty-five. Says except for, I have a bunch of activities, all storage activities.
Well, some ways to.
Because.
The car you do just to go. You're not gonna store.
Right, I fill it up and haul it in. I don't, they typically don't last. Month, maybe.
Out back, we're talking about restoring cars, we've got a little story.
Nothing would be stored out front. Any car that's, any car that's gonna sit more than a couple days or a week is gonna be out back where you can't see it. Any car out front is waiting for the customer to come pick up, or it's my personal vehicle that gets driven intermittently.
The car's along the fence line there. But along the, when you say you turn, you turn it in on the back.
Yeah, those will either be, I pass some of my vehicles out because I have too many vehicles. So I have, I don't know how many vehicles I have registered right now, five, six probably. But so I park them on that back line and then customer vehicles that are ready to go will be parked out front. So any vehicle parked out front isn't being stored technically, is being waited to be picked up. There's way to pick up or for me to drive it. So every vehicle out there will be respectfully looking and driving. So technically, that's not in storage, I wouldn't say it is.
I'll make a motion that the application submitted is complete for purposes of moving forward. Notify others, so for purposes of notifying your others and scheduling a public hearing. Oh, waiting is.
Alright, so we have a motion, find the application complete. Uh, was there a second?
Second.
Second of the discussion. Okay, alright, so, um, uh, we found your application complete, um, and we. Uh, it may be the next meeting, but we need to talk about the agenda and the timing and we can talk to Chip about that. Um, and technically it will be a public hearing. And, um. It could be as soon as two weeks.
I said that would be wonderful, it could be understandable.
Now, I have one question. After the public hearing, do you then make the decision if it's granted or not?
Often, yeah. On some of the more complicated ones, we might not, but, um. Generally speaking, we make the decision.
Now, obviously, I'm welcome to come to that meeting too, way too.
Tom, I've never been through none of this, so.
You did good.
Thank you. Appreciate all of you guys' time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So we're good to go?
And I'd like to mention at the beginning of the meeting that, um, John is a voting member, because we're missing a number of people, yes. This, uh, application, uh, the cottage on Torsey, it was our second agenda item and. Um, we completed a site visit just prior to the regular meeting. We were all there, so I don't think we need to go through that. The, um. I don't know that there are any members of the public and Zoom members, but you.
Nope, just us.
So I will open a public hearing at this time. And, um, I think that, you know, we've had some recent conversation about this, you know, onsite and so forth. Everyone has reviewed the application. Um, so I don't think that we need a full summary of it, but if you could come up and. If there are any points in particular that you think were important to highlight and start the public hearing process.
Okay.
I'd invite you to do that. And it doesn't need to be, and an enormous amount of these, well, because we're all pretty familiar with.
Okay. Um, if I could just grab the boards real quick. Thank you.
And we, you know, we did have members of the public that wanted to make a comment. I think I would ask you to do a little more, but.
Of course.
That's not the case, so I think.
So, um. I think the, the point, just in a, the general summary of what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, having seen the house and the way that it has been built over the years and steps down to the water and. Creates, um, not just untenable situation for, for Kelly and Steve in terms of how they live and how they use the home. But also, um, becomes, uh, a bit unsightly as it begins to step down towards the water. So our goal from the beginning of the project was really threefold. It was to prove. How the house flows and how it functions for the residents, to improve the overall appearance from the exterior. As well as to improve its relationship to the water, it be in compliance with the shoreline zone regulations as much as we possibly could. And so I feel like the solution that we've come up with has, has done that, has accomplished many of those, all of those, um, those objectives. And, um, and so we, we, we feel good about it. And again, just to, to review, if. We, we created this diagrams, which I keep coming back to, which I feel like are, are really representative of the goal of what we're trying to do here. With the road being here and the water being at this left edge, with all of this piece here, these steps, the deck, the steps onto the screen porch. Just here in this whole section here being removed. Which is the areas that, excuse me, are closest to the water with that dash line being the fifty-foot line. And taking that floor area and replacing it back here behind, mostly behind that fifty-foot line, uh, with new living area. Both in the, in the dark, two dark shaded areas and then these hatch areas being deck areas, so. And all of this now being on essentially one level there. So we've accomplished trying to get all the living area on one level. We feel like we've created a design that is, that is nice to look at and be good neighbors to the surrounding area. And we've improved this by not only removing all of this, the pieces that are closest to the water and some of the areas, again, that. That Kelly and Steve enjoy the most, that screen porch being, being one of them, um, and moving them back behind that fifty-foot line. Um, we are not, as you can see, based on the, the summary, we're not increasing the floor area, the building. We are reducing the, uh, the lot coverage by four percent, so we feel like we're making significant improvements in multiple areas. So for us, it feels like it, it's a successful, uh, attempt at, at trying to comply with the shoreline zone and same time trying to. Trying to, uh, comply with the objectives that we set out at the very beginning. So, uh, I could walk you through the floor plan, but I think this to me feels like it's the crux of what we're talking about in terms of improvements. Building and improvements to the site and compliance with, with the shoreline zone. So I'm happy to, to address any questions that you might have. I know you're all fairly familiar with projects so far with the packet of information that you submitted. And having walked through the house and, and been there, but I'm happy to, to address the questions.
I have a question.
Sure.
Any question?
Okay.
Is everything being torn down and rebuilt or some, some left standing?
No, what we're gonna do is be, when this all comes, comes down, obviously there'll be some substantial renovations of the pieces that exist. But for the purposes of, you're talking about removing all of this and rebuilding it?
Right.
No, no. And so everything that's shaded here light will either be renovated or will stay in place.
Because when you say it would all be on one level, what will it be? Inside the house, because we stepped down from the garage.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna build up these areas, some of these areas in order to get the floor level all the way, the same all the way across. Right, so this area here essentially would be that area. This is all at one level and then it begins to step down as you come here and then step down again. So we're gonna build that up so that, so it's at the same. Right.
How about, um, in the. What is gonna, her, you know, lower, um, drawing there?
Yep.
What is the little long rectangle, um, close to the river?
Here, this is, uh, this is a balcony that is off of.
Yeah, balcony?
Yes. So, um, this, this fifty foot line kind of runs zigzags through the, the site here. This is the, the limit of the existing, and then we're adding this piece in the screen porch here. And we're proposing to add this balcony or deck here with stairs that lead down.
So, it's a, it's a deck at the same level as the door there?
Correct, or a step down, essentially.
Okay.
Do I understand? Think that the net effect of your proposed changes is to reduce floor area by two foot feet?
That's correct. Giving ourselves just a little bit of slack there, whatever, just in case.
Everything will be beyond fifty feet except for that.
This little chunk here. Yeah, and so again, the, the reason for that is that under this existing piece, there's foundation. And so, if we wanted to pull it fully back behind five hundred, be, be, behind, uh, fifty feet. I would, we would have to remove this and pour a new foundation wall. So. Um, again, from just an environmental perspective alone, to, to do that seems like it's, it's wasteful. So, our hope is that we'd be allowed to maintain this piece that's just over the fifty foot line. So that we don't have to tear that up, put a new foundation wall, remove all that, that concrete, put a new foundation wall underneath and build it new.
There were, um. There were a number of issues that we not only talked about this the first time. From a land use ordinance perspective, there's some, you know, some complicating issues. And, uh, Jack and I had a conversation with the, with the town attorney. And we've not, uh, shared that with other planning board members yet, but I thought we could maybe talk about that for a few minutes. And, and see if there are any questions about it, but. What, uh, what had come up was, first of all, the. It was a little. Unclear exactly what this was, you know, was it a replacement, was it, um, a reconstruction, was it relocation? And it makes a difference, uh, what name you give it in terms of which standards apply. And in our conversation, um, with the town attorney. She felt fairly strongly that it was appropriate to view this as a hybrid, really. Between, uh, a hybrid between relocation and replacement. Um, and. The effect of that is, is a, a couple of things that, that we can get into specifically, but. We had started the conversation about whether or not, uh, what the, what the market value was of, of the project. Because that's one of the, um, thresholds in the land use ordinance. For what type of permit it gets and so forth. But as we talked to the town attorney about. The, the project, um, because it, uh, presumably meets the greatest practical extent standard. Um, we've talked about that a bit. And the fact that it doesn't cleanly fall into the replacement or the relocation piece or the reconstruction piece. Uh, her thought on it was that really the fifty percent is irrelevant because of all of those factors. And that, you know, we're kind of in the, another region between section four. A and four B, um, and so, it's, it's a combination of both of those things.
Sorry, Tom, can I answer?
Sure.
When you, when you mentioned just, just now, the fifty percent, what, what do you mean by that?
That fifty percent that I'm referencing is that in, in B, uh, reconstruction or replacement. It says that if you remove, um, a non-conforming structure. Um, regardless of cause, by more than fifty percent of the market value of the structure before such damage or, or removal. It may be reconstructed or replaced, provided that a permit is obtained and, and so forth. And so, the, the difference in some cases between that and B two, where the CEO issues a permit. Is that fifty percent. So, if someone said, I'm going to remove less than fifty percent of my cottage. And I'm going to reconstruct it in place. That would trigger a CEO permit. But that's not the case here. Um, it's not, um, it's not reconstructing in place, for one thing. And so, and it, it may well be, you know, greater than fifty percent, I guess, as it probably is, but. Um, I don't think that we need to go there. It doesn't become a, a critical decision point anymore. That make sense?
Yeah.
The, let's see, um. The other piece is the, we had talked about the foundation section. And initially, uh, my thought on the foundation was that it was going to be problematic because it says. Whenever a new enlarged or replacement foundation is constructed beneath an existing non-conforming structure. And the foundation that you're proposing is not beneath an existing non-conforming structure. It's going to be replacement structure. But, we need to be in conversation with the town attorney because. Her recommended, her strong recommendation was that we consider this. Uh, as a merger between the replacement and relocation provisions. Is that the piece that you were talking about, um, the fifty foot threshold in the foundation section. Um, does apply because it is a relo, that, that is a relocation. Um, it's not, um. It's not an expansion, it's not a reconstruction, it is appropriately taught as a relocation.
Okay.
So, those were the, the primary ones that she made when we talked to her. Did I miss anything, Jack? Do you want to add? Well, yes, it is. Does all of that make sense to? You?
Yes.
Relocation and then reconstruction.
It is. I, well. I have to think about all the pieces. They're not all the. It's not, it's not all relocation, or it's not all reconstruction. You know, hence the hybrid, but, yeah. Yeah, and I think it would be difficult to try to pull all those pieces apart and try to assign. You know, a name to all of them, which is what brought us to this point, where we're looking at.
But basically, it's. The new structure meets the greatest practical extent test. Whatever you call it. And it's not expanding.
Right. Right, and, you know, I think we talked last time about the fact that there are, you know, three. Three. Basic principles of why here, we've got to, uh, find that it meets the greatest practical extent standard. And we also need to find that it's, doesn't constitute an expansion for any reason. And I think we've been over that pretty thoroughly.
In the greatest practical extent, there's deceptive system, there's the road, there's the slope of the line and stuff.
There's existing vegetation on that side that we prefer to keep as a buffer between ourselves and the neighbor as well.
Then, then, the way you get down to the water in the house, we. What was it, step, wooden steps or stone or?
Um, there'll be steps. We haven't discussed whether there are wood steps or stone steps, but. They'll, they'll certainly meet the, the ordinance requirements. I think it allows us something less than four feet down to the water. You know, and, and it might need to stagger, it's because it's fairly steep, so it might need to wind to get there, but I want to keep. You know, the risers from being eighteen inches to get straight shot down. But yeah, the idea is that we would have some path that is minimal that leads from the house. The deck areas to the water.
I think the one other point that was made when we were talking to the town attorney, um, I don't think has any particular bearing on. On, on case, but, uh, just because of the way things worked out, but. Um, she did make it clear that the greatest practical extent determination doesn't just apply to the new pieces, uh, to reconstructed. Portions or relocated portions, it applies to the entire structure. But I think as we've talked about, the greatest practical extent standard, um, I think we've been talking about the entire structure. And that, that it couldn't be moved back further, even garage, for instance, can't go back any further for. A couple of different reasons. So, I, I don't think it has any direct bearing on the result of all of this, but that wasn't my question.
And you said you were okay with, um. Complying with Bill Monocle's recommendations for.
Yep, um, I, I feel like he, uh, recommended what we had talked about when we were at the house, when we're standing on the deck, is when. Those pieces that are closest to the water be removed, he was recommending revegetation in that area with native plants. Um, and so, that, that's something that we had been planning on and are committed to doing anyway. So, I think his recommendations actually fall perfectly in line with our expectations and our, our plan anyway.
So, during construction, this must be in your application, there'll simply erosion control measures?
Yep, we have a sheet, it should be in your packet, um, and it's in the full packet that is just a sheet of. Uh, erosion control notes and details.
I, I think I discussed it with you, I hold to a higher standard, so not just fencing. But in your case, would be fencing, erosion control mulch, and hay bales.
Yep, yeah.
Everything back.
I think we have all those details in here, and certainly, uh, especially on sites that are close to the water and have steep grades. That's our standard operating procedure anyway, in terms of requiring that, that. That page of, um, our erosion control measures is part of our construction document set that goes to the builder. We're on site to make sure that that happens.
Someone, um, we're gonna take the motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to. Prove the application as a subject to standard conditions, which. Chip will give me a sheet of the standard conditions. And based on finding that the reconstruction, relocation, with the greatest practical extent test. Based on part of the location of the septic system, roads and that and the slope of the line. Oh, and, and then you'll, uh, comply with their recommendations of policy for. Revegetation is still one of them, of course.
There's second?
Also.
And I would take a motion to close the hearing. The session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. Looks like major, major construction in the, you know, in eight months or so. So, it's what it is. But we're, we're a lot of money, and we're happy to do it.
I'll be watching you close.
We have eyes on.
We appreciate your time. We know you're all volunteers.
Yes, thank you very much.
And it's getting colder. Good luck.
Thanks. We, we didn't talk to the board that long. They didn't do that.
Right.
And, you know, when I look at the language, you know, my thought was that, you know, they, 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 it's talking about a, a non-conforming structure. And it's, I don't know, it's nonsensical to me to think that somebody that, you know, if you happen to have. You know, three old garages and six sheds, and all of a sudden, you could take this for footage and make your cottage bigger. I mean, that's extreme, obviously, but just inceptionally, that makes sense to me.
And that's fire reaction too, but the thing is. I, I can't remember where I saw it now, I can't find it again, but. There's something in the ordinance that seems to, not directly, but it seems to indicate that that might be all right. Um, you know, and I will. At some point, find that, but.
I, I don't know what it is, but I'd be interested.
It's not correct, so, it's just an implication of it in the language for the time. Not, not that, not that that means that that's the. That, that's what the ordinance means, but it's just, it was language, it's kind of funny.
And, and so, wow, that, that could mean that maybe it needs to be clarified.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that's right.
I think the statement is, until we're looking at, you know, setbacks, you know, when you're using the, the greatest practical extent, how far you are from the water. The first one fits along what we've always been talking about, but the second two mentions all structures. And I think that's kind of, we may, that's all structures on the property, but I think it's all structures that are in the zone, is what they're talking to.
No, I know, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
So, it could be, it's just a little correction in the next version.
Right.
Okay, we've got minutes, now September ten. And, uh, actually, Angelica, I, I believe. July twenty third is over and done and approved, but I noticed the other day that, um. Planning board members present, Dana, Sarah, and Miss Liston, he wasn't at that meeting.
For July twenty third?
Right.
Okay, I think that's the one, yes, so I'll fix that.
Okay. And, uh, minutes from the tenth, uh, both Jack and Peter had sent some comments. And so. It would be. That amended version that we'd be looking at with both Jack's and Peter's comments. Uh, Peter, you didn't, uh, you didn't insert your language, maybe we just want to remind everybody what com, what your comments were. And then Jack would have a markup for it.
That would have required me to find the email I wrote.
I have that.
But I think, I, I, I might scribble it, um. For, for example, just where the, we, the word footprint, which. Is clear enough in most cases, but I thought they used the floor area instead, since it's something referring to floor area there, I thought.
Yeah.
Um. And then just some lineups about the. And then just some language about the fire pod, making sure that what we required, that the uh the applicant. Didn't agree to amend their app, their plan to create a fire pod, as part of that, as 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 part of the stormwater management. Um. That's what the minutes, I just, it's a clarification issue, not a substantive change. Uh and then a couple other little substantive, I mean, there. Just language stuff, referring to Mr. Benke, by the way, is he spelled correctly? Do we know, um?
I believe so, yes.
As a representative of rather than a representation for the Metatoma Association. Um, then finally, my last little comment was just that. We agreed that the public carrier was left, was recessed and be uh reconvened in the future. At at a date to be determined, um by the board and the applicant.
Anything else on this, anyone else?
And that was initially, of course, all just uh well-granted comments.
So no additional comments, um I take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the marriage as an idea.
Motion and second discussion. Allies in favor?
I'm not supposed to vote records.
Usually I would abstain if you were with me. So. That then abstention. So four, right, four and two. Thank you. Right, and the only other thing, um I wanted to just take a minute to see if we could talk about is. We talked very generally about maybe setting up a separate meeting or a workshop to talk about. Ordinance revisions and policy matters. And um. We could, you know, we could do that, have a regular scheduled meeting, but there, uh I don't know if you have any other allocations that you're aware of. Check that are coming up and we don't know when that Toma is coming back, right?
Well, I'd like a suggestion that's from the board, you know. Zach would really like to get his license done, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Like you facilitate that, Metatoma. I think if they were mentioned, they'd like to make that even too, so that I think those are the only two right now that's going.
Well, and four there will be in.
That's right.
And also, uh Eric told me that the fairgrounds application.
I have not seen that, he told me it's coming to.
He said it's coming and he wants to bring it on the eighth.
We'll see if it fits.
So there are those things, so there's quite a lot.
Well, it'll be good to know who's available in the next, in the upcoming meetings, like the two in October and the two in November. Okay, um that would help us fit in. The different things, other things coming up, so um. Is there like a date in the next four meetings where nobody can make it? Or we can't get for him, or there's a problem? Halloween, Halloween.
Well, there's a Tuesday night, Celine.
Disruption, what?
Tuesday nights, I think, there is a. The next regular, next meeting we normally have will be.
Be the eighth and twenty second.
Eighteenth and twenty second, I've got problems with those days.
Okay.
I'm fine too.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like there is, you know, a fair bit of regular work to do and um I wanted to check to see what everyone's thoughts on. About doing a special meeting.
They can have it happen.
It feels like that to me. It is, you know, we won't do all of that, but we do need to figure out what the irony.
Yeah, I believe the fairgrounds will have an attendance.
Yeah, uh um. Yeah, and so we're talking about a special moving date potentially for the L U L stuff because all of that.
Right, like an off Tuesday.
Um, it could be an off Tuesday, it could be some other night, um, you know, with the interest of one.
It's not a Wednesday for me, this fall.
Or me.
By doing a course, two hour course, I mean, or me, would it not be a work for getting rolling?
Possibly, we I have to check the schedule though, if we wanted to do any kind of a Tuesday that's not a pre-planned meeting. But I'm certainly looking into it and then, you know.
Well, for starters, could you um could you check the fifteenth and the twenty ninth?
Sure, yeah.
And see what those look like, yeah. And. Yeah, yeah. And you know, and my thought is that we need to, we need to get started as soon as possible because the deadlines, you know. They always just leave so fast, come up so fast, we do. And I think, no, I was looking, Eric had put out a. A document that I I think the select board talked about. And it had to do with the budget and the warrant articles and I, you know, I think the first deadline is really the beginning of March. Um, we always are able to push it a little further than that because we do a hearing as well as the select board, but. I think that we need to assume that we'll only have, you know, basically four that wants to do this in November through. Through February, we might get a little bit of time in March. So.
No, that would be a. If we do it on an off, then it still would be.
And the other thing I wanted to ask about this, uh I know that Jack, you know, you do have a couple of things you wanted to add to the list. Uh in case there anything, if anyone else had a good life.
Yeah, I, go ahead. No, I don't think, it's probably just, shouldn't be on this year's list, but I think that would always should we. Go to, you know, look overall at the CID article nine. Article nine, I, my own view. Which is funny, is that the wording of it, the way it is worded right now is problematic. Because it expresses moral character, it doesn't talk about jobs. Or economic development, I think should be more balanced.
Now, actually. I. I don't know how much time. You know, we're going to have to to give it a major facelift, but I included on that list, um. Uh, well, there's the solar thing, of course, but then in addition to that. I had included clarify or modify certain provisions of Article Nine based on the planning board's initial experience last year administering articles.
I could think about some language.
And and there were some, you know, there's that issue and there are some some other things that were fuzzy in there. Things that just. You remember some of those, we talked to someone at a time, the language was just hard to work with. So.
Is the um. Is this issue about uh. Squirtwood issue, is that on the list?
It is not on the list, that was my, I could be on the list. Um, it probably wouldn't take a lot to clarify.
Well, that's just, you know. It's come up.
But do you want to look at that one? And.
Look at it.
See what.
rewrite it.
Uh. Yeah. You know, find the, find the language, you know, figure out that, you know, if you think it needs to be clarified and. How so, and we can put it on the list for conversation.
One that I was, one that I was referring to was uh. It's floor, the definition of floor area. Says, steps are stairs up to four feet of width. Or excluding, and when it says up to four feet in the web, if it's. If it's four feet, is that too much, is that okay?
But two. Two equally.
But what is that, if somebody, like forty eight, if it's forty seven and a half inches, it's okay, or if it's forty eight inches, it's not okay.
I think the common, more common interpretation is that you go to forty eight inches, but it could be certainly clarified.
But it needs, it needs some clarity, so.
Yeah, because it also refers to castors that are four feet or more. So I was just confused, I, it came up with this with their last project, when they were removing all these. Things that say what else. I don't care what, which way it is, matters, it's a little clearly.
I have one more here. Um, I've had a couple of issues with. Floor area footprint. And there's been some recent modifications in shoreline zoning. With the state, and I was dealing with Colin Clark on a couple of the issues that I ran into when he says, well, the new. Version we've kind of moved into is more towards footprint. And then, hopefully with that, I said, well, you know, floor area could be construed as more restricted, he says, yeah, but. I'd like to meet with your board at some point in time and just explain why we uh. Why we're moving towards footprint and just have a general discussion.
Was there actually. Language changed in the shoreline?
I believe so, but I didn't get into that. So, um again, he's offered, he's offered to commit, either did I. That's why he's offered to come in and do a, uh maybe a. Twenty minute presentation or fifteen, whatever it takes, on the new nuances of, you know, what they brought up today with them. So I don't think that would hurt if we have time before one day.
So they made up on simple.
You should have that initiative for you, you should. It, no, it, you know, what his point was is that the VP in there ruling. You know, strive towards footprint now, rather strongly it sounded like. And he said if you had a difficult person that can imagine who might be, that you might have to have. You know, like a dual meeting for both floor area and footprint because of the overlap.
But there is no overlap in the solace.
Again, that's what I, you know, again, that's why I said, I'd be watching.
Call that when it's over, about ten minutes.
That's why he said, well, I could come in and get a quick description of why you're doing this. And then just clear the air, so.
Well, if if you can find out if there's, if they actually change that language in the model ordinance that we should be looking at, that would be helpful. If we can find out, bragging out on this, and I don't know what it is, they clear.
Right.
Yeah, well, if there are other, you know, other things, we can certainly, you know, just have a, within three big lists, we can, we can, you know. Add things and we'll need to make some choices, obviously, because we're not, I don't think we're going to get to all of this. Um. And the other thing I would say about this list is that we probably need to dedicate some time at some point. Just to talk about the comprehensive plan um by itself, because there's a lot in there that. Me, planning board is going to ultimately be responsible for. What I included specifically on this list are just those things that are designated as. Short term implementation. And there are just pages of mid and long term things, and that's, you know, over. Period of years, but I think it would be a good idea for us to kind of review it together and understand what's there. So that we can set some priorities.
Oh, what's, what, what was the most recent updated conference?
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty three.
I don't have the right copy, I should tell you that.
Three hundred pages.
Oh, no, it's a, it's a fine historical doc. Uh, it's on, it's on the.
Are are there printing files that have time? I'm pretty sure.
There's not, we can check.
Yeah. Yeah, it's. Yeah, if you have to have us all be available, um, for the bone and everything, so definitely person had something. Twenty five cents a page if you want to do the town.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, a lot of it is narrative though, it's, you know, it's storytelling. You know, there's a big section about, you know, posing, for instance, popularly, most of these things. Um. And um so there's a lot of background information and narrative, and then there are pieces that, uh. You know, that list, um policies and strategies, and that's kind of the need of it, that's what we would be looking at to figure out what we're going to. Although the rest of it is. Simply, um it's the policy and strategies that are kind of the crux of it. Um, and then the other piece uh on the the list, the new challenge provisions. There are three bullets, uh the first bullet, obviously, those are things that, you know, the planning board over some months has identified. Those things that we need to come back to and and take a look at. The second bullet, uh I had mentioned during one of our meetings that there was a meeting among Eric and Catherine. Um Catherine, uh had a list of all the town ordinances, not just the planning board ordinances, but. All the ordinances in town. The pl- uh the select board, um is interested appropriately in making sure that all the boards and commissions and. Whoever is charged with administering those ordinances, uh reviews them periodically to make sure they're still current. So that's what that second bullet is about the reviews of ordinances. Um and that's where that that list came from, these are the ones that the planning board, um is theoretically involved, but. So that's the second bullet and the third bullet is about cotton.
Do we have any other ordinances besides the, uh?
Uh, yeah, and there's the name line of use ordinance, uh there's a sludge ordinance, believe it or not. Um, about about which I know quite a lot. And um.
Or in dogs, that's all of that.
Yeah, and 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 the reason that it was on Catherine's list was, you know, maybe this is one that we should look at and, you know.
The instruction for eight block.
Yeah. Uh, there's communication tower ordinance, uh we have the solar ordinance and there is the floodplain management ordinance. Not that that needs to be updated because it just was, but but those are the ones that we like the, the planning board is implicated in. And so those aren't specific changes, those are, you know, kind of a, a minute to do a review and then come back with. Anything that might need to be changed, and the sludge ordinance, for instance, you know, I happen to know that the. The big thing that needs to happen with that is that on the state level, uh sludge land application is prohibited. Stand now because of the B F S issue, and our ordinance doesn't ban it and it needs to. So that's something. Um, that probably is the fix, but I'm not certain because I think it may have combined sludge and septicage. And septicage is not being completed. So I think the, you know.
And when we did sludge, I don't think it was just septicage.
No, I think. So, yeah, yeah. I think it was for sludge land application as well as septicage, but. Yeah, that's something I can look at fairly easily, thanks. So.
But it's. Sludge bans, uh by state law.
Yes. Yeah. And um that's all I've got, anything else, anybody? Okay, so Angelica will let us know about room availability, yeah. Maybe we can figure something out for my group of people on the board. And we'll have everybody know after she has some. Thanks, thanks, and welcome back, Phil, good to see you, it's been a while. We miss you. We're adjourned.
Eleven thousand five hundred miles.